It's in, uh, hands off? Hands off, okay, now how to use this, eh? You should be better than me on this, eh? Okay, uh, hands off enough. So who is single and available? Wow, very fast. Tian Ju Peng, Tian Sun, Wang Kang, Zhou Chang, Chen Si, okay. Um, is everyone here? I think I can see in one screen. Yeah, okay, good. We have five, five twenty-five. Okay, good, wow, they're singles. Now, very good, uh, this is just to make sure that the function works well. And also, some of these questions will be related later. So, uh, thank you, Doria, for inviting me. I'm Joe. Uh, my students call me Uncle Joe. Uh, I work in a preschool, uh, for the last seven years. Um, I will try to share my slide very quickly, go through them with you. Then, I think the interesting part is, uh, in the Q and A. So, uh, I hope, oh, I look so small. Can I make it bigger? Oh, I can make myself bigger. Excellent. Ah, okay, very good skills I have today. Okay, right. So, um, I've met Doria many, many hundred years ago. Uh, I cannot remember. I used to be a student as well. I was told that they are, uh, half of the students here are Malaysians. Uh, all of you are master students, very smart people. Uh, and half of you are from China. A very good topic today as well, uh, because, um, I've travelled a little bit. So, um, let me see, can I put, oh, yeah, good. Okay, uh, please put some hands if you can see this, um, so that I know that I'm not talking to myself. Uh, put some hands, okay, good. So, um, yes, I'm Joe. I have three profiles. One is my social media profile. I try to be, uh, active in sports. So, uh, of course, uh, LinkedIn, my job as a preschool teacher. Uh, I run, eh, seven years ago. I embark on a journey to do something about preschool education. Um, I will expand a little bit wide. Uh, and also, I think through my years as a student. Twenty years ago, I've met Doria somewhere in the university somewhere. Um, so that's how we get to know each other. And of course, my recent profile, that's my profile. Uh, you can see a little bit on my arm. Actually, I have, uh, quite a number of tattoos on my body. Uh, despite being a preschool teacher, uh, at the same time, I play a lot with my students. Uh, and my teachers do not like me when I go to school because it means that the students are not going to study and we are going to play. So that's my job, the good cop, and my teachers are the bad cop, okay? So I have that, uh, uh, job. My job is to have, uh, play and fun. And I can guarantee you, when we play, uh, my students go all out and the parents go all out as well. So, um, very quickly about myself. Um, when I was in the university, I, uh, participated, uh, in an organisation called ISAC. Uh, we believe in cultural exchange, youth leadership. Um, on the left-hand corner, I was living and working with young people. Uh, back then in the country called Estonia, currently very close to war. Um, and, uh, oh, I repeated some of my pictures. Um, the bottom part is when I was organising a Asia-Pacific, uh, student. Yeah, student, um, conference, uh, with all the people around Asia-Pacific. Uh, we go there to learn about leadership. We go there and learn about what can we do to make the country, the world, a little bit better, about communication. Uh, and I have a background of travelling and living overseas. So, um, and I was in the job of growing companies. Uh, very professional, I work eighteen hours a day. Uh, at one hand, I would be having five to ten projects, uh, to build businesses for my bosses, for my companies. So that is a very short background of myself. Click, okay. So, uh, let me move myself to the right corner. So, after many years of working and travelling, uh, I'm getting old, as you can see. My hair is baby hairs, uh, yes. Uh, and I decided to say enough is enough, uh, to work for people. And I decided to quit and figure out what I want to do. So a few things, I do like, uh, education. I do like training. I do like learning. So, uh, seven years ago, I quit my job and decided to go and ask around. My ambition is to build a primary school. A primary school for some of students in overseas, uh, it's seven to twelve. Uh, many people call it different names. Uh, Malaysia, we call it primary school or small school. Uh, and then you have secondary schools, right? So, but because, uh, I don't have money because to build a school, because a lot of money. So I went and looked into, uh, uh, learn from people. And one day, uh, owner, as I was visiting a preschool kindergarten, she decided to say, hey, do you want it? I'm selling enough. I called two of my friends, hey, do you have enough money? Check your bank account. Okay, if you have, then let's do it. So, uh, that's how I started seven years ago. I wanted to make a small difference for education in Malaysia. Uh, of course, because of my travelling around the world, I can see a lot of things that people are still doing very good in education, despite they are very modern. Uh, but there's still something about preschool and its old school. So, uh... So now, what do you know about preschool? So, uh, it would be good that I will ask you to write down or think about it. What do you know about preschool? Okay, uh, I have a saying, I think some of here, uh, I have a Chinese saying uh, in, in my community, of course, I think it's quite everywhere that's, there is this saying. Um, uh, it is in Cantonese, I'm reading in Cantonese. Uh, okay, wow, that's a good chat, good. I can see that. I'm learning so much now. Uh, okay, just to clear that, um, so, uh, in Cantonese, it sounds like this, okay? Uh, Sam soi teng pasap. What it means is it literally, uh, three years old decide eighty years old. Uh, what it means, it's also that what we learn in the young age will bring us to, uh, old age. Right? Uh, there's a saying in Bahasa, there's a saying in English, uh, in Africa. Uh, there's a lot of saying about young children. So, uh, for me, uh, I wanted to do something because I didn't like what's happening uh, in where I live now. Uh, and decided with my friends to do something about it. So, uh, and I think I can make the biggest impact in, uh, early childhood education. So that's why I embarked on it seven years ago. Very quickly, it's just any articles you can find, um, is success depends more on personality than intelligence. So, uh, I'm a believer of things in early childhood. For example, we will have a chat very quickly afterwards. How do you teach? It's easy to teach A, B, C, but how do you teach things like confidence? And what age do we teach confidence? Example, self-esteem. Uh, I might not be the most handsome guy in the room, but I have no problem having my hair dropped uh, because I've kept this hairstyle for many, many years. So, uh, but does it decide how I behave, how I look at myself? Um, I believe that's related to when I was young. So, uh, very quickly, I run a preschool called Johanne Preschool. Uh, these three words describe who we are. I will explain a little bit about us. Uh, we are child-centric. We focus on what the child needs, uh, rather than what we think we need to teach. Uh, lifelong lessons, uh, we believe that what we teach will be able to bring them, uh, in the future. Uh, particularly primary school, because primary school is a little bit messy now. And of course, when they grow older. Uh, and of course, uh, I think one thing is, uh, we champion progress. Okay, so, uh, oh, can you see the name of my school? Important. Advertising time now, okay. Doria is gonna score me later. So, um, next. Does it click? Okay. Okay, um, during MCO, it's a time for us to, uh, MCO our lockdowns in COVID. Uh, I believe, uh, Beijing is starting to lock down now, Shanghai last two weeks. Uh, we all, uh, affected by COVID. Uh, so, uh, during one of the things, uh, I decided to work with an artist, a friend, to come up with a series of comics. Finally, yay, I have a comic of myself, out of myself. So, uh, this comic really represents what we believe in. Uh, if you can look at it, uh, it is a graph. It is also a mountain. And, uh, what we see in learning is, it is, um... Technically, you call it scaffolding, right? Uh, some of a lot of theories that you all, and then, all of you are very smart. Uh, to be, to be very clear, I'm not a professional in education. Uh, so, uh, yep, but what I'm doing is bringing a lot of relevance for preschool education uh, because I'm quite exposed, and I also believe that I'm preparing them for the future. Yes, there are very good philosophies hundred years ago, very good. Madame Montessori is a very good woman. She has done a lot. Uh, Waldorf Learning, uh, Steiner is another good one as well. So there's many, many philosophers. Uh, but we must also remember that while they are good things, uh, the children of today will go on the next twenty years, where maybe Uncle Joe might not live so long. So what can we help the young children today, uh, to survive for the next twenty, thirty, forty years? So a lot of relevance, right? Things like, uh, social media safety. Uh, metadata in YouTube. Uh, some weird, weird, uh, cartoons happening now. So all these things are happening, uh, and we need to prepare them for the future. So, uh, this comic really helped us to connect to parents. Uh, I'm supposed to talk about a small topic about parents as well, uh, so I'll bring that up a bit. So, this is to remind, uh, parents that no matter where they are, the children, uh, our job is to scaffold them and improve. For example, like today in a class, uh, today is twenty-five, right? Uh, you are adult, it's easier to see. Some of you are married, some of you are not married. So maybe you can take it, uh, take it as a reminder. Those who have siblings, can you tell me that you are exactly the same with your siblings? You have the same father, same mother, right? Assuming you don't have the same mother, also never mind you have the same father, so there's one. Or you have a same father, different mothers, it's okay. You have some blood. Or you grew up together, but you are never the same as your sibling. I am hun, I don't know, three hundred sixty, you times two, another three hundred sixty, totally different from my siblings. I have two siblings and they are not the same. And I can guarantee you, my parents, my father has nine siblings, they are totally different. Right? They're totally different, even though they're same family, same community, same upbringing, uh, same culture. But they're totally different. So in a preschool, for example, we have ten, five-years-old children. They are not the same. They live differently. They have different culture. They eat different food, uh, but they are all five years old. So how do you teach? And some of them, first time coming to preschool. Some of them has been in a play school, uh, a nursery. Uh, they are exposed to people for last two years, so they can go to toilet, they can take care of themselves. Uh, they can eat, they won't play without food. Whereas a new one, a new boy who joined preschool for first time, uh, they will have to learn. So it is in our little preschool, uh, belief that what we can do is to build upon what they have, yeah, in a very small scale and in a big scale. In preschool point of view, and during MCO or during the lockdown, uh, because our authorities have shortened the terms. On twenty-twenty, we were locked down for the first time in our lives for two months. Uh, and then, uh, we couldn't open for at least six months. But the years have gone by and they are still going to primary school. What do we do? How do we do about it? Right? The second year is even funny, it was seven years, uh, seven months. So if you add together in a normal term, you don't have twenty-two months of learning. And of course, this effect will happen when they go to primary school as well. So, uh, and if you look at that, I think it's important that we realise that, uh, children, when they come to school, uh, what can we do? Second point, um, preschool these days are very different. My year, I go to preschool to learn A, B, C. Nowadays, young children come preloaded by default operating system. They know A, B, C. You don't need to teach A, B, C, yeah? They don't need A, B, C. They tell you what is A, B, C. Right, teacher, you are saying it wrongly. They will say that. Okay, I see some of you, uh, uh, give some signals if you are listening, if you can hear me clearly. Of course, I can see Doria, she is my, uh, beacon there to make sure that, uh, you can hear me from your lives. So, young children come with preloaded. Oh, thank you, Malini. Thank you, Tuli, I think. So, what do we do? Uh, are we still going to teach A, B, C? No. And in fact, they are totally very good. I have a student who can do multiplications of twelve times twelve at the age of three and a half. And the parents ask me, what do I do? They're like, Uncle Joe, what do I do? Right? And, 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 and he, at this boy, of course, uh, it's okay, eh? Uh, this boy, uh, is very good, can speak very well. And they can come and tell you, say, teacher, today I am not happy. I am angry today. Therefore, I don't want to do reading. So what do you do at four years old? And all of you are very smart, right? I believe all of you are very smart and all of you are very good in what you study. And some of we are professionals. What do you do, uh, at, at four years old? Right? And, uh, and this boy somehow can make, uh, addition of ten thousand plus ten thousand. Right? And the parents keep encouraging, oh, very good, you're very smart. I give you more. I give you. Even I got problem remembering twelve times twelve. And it's by memory, my old school of education, I had to remember. If you put the twelve and the twelve together, it must be one, four, four. Yes, that's it. But this boy can do it. So, um, so the bigger problem that we are facing now is the parents or older adults, uh, their skills are not updated. And they have forgotten that you are thirty-five, forty-five, or twenty-five. When you talk to a child of four, five, six, uh, you forgot to look at them at four, five, six. So, uh, this is one thing that we use to help young children. Uh, this is what we do. Uh, very many children these days, uh, their feet are very sensitive. They are very, very, uh, royalty. Their feet cannot touch the grass because they say it's not very nice. Uh, if you bring them to seaside, it's worse. They won't touch at all. They will just catch on you and they won't touch. And then how do you enjoy seaside? All right? We have to go very far away to go seaside. So, uh, that's what we do. Um, another thing that we do that I'm pretty proud, how do you teach sex in preschool? Uh, not as in adult sex, reproduction sex, but nonetheless, sex. How do you teach caring? How do you teach about if you don't take care of a plant, they die? Uh, because there's no topic about caring, uh, at least now, what I was told. Uh, we used to have a subject called moral learning. I'm not sure what's happening now in preschool, uh, primary school and also secondary school. Uh, there's no, uh, ethics anymore. I think my generation, I'm forty-four, this forty-five, forty-four. Uh, before that, there was a paper called Top Ethics and, uh, Community Learning or something. Uh, but now no more. So, uh, my year, there was a moral. Uh, of course, uh, some of my peers, they have other subjects in other schools. So what we do is every age group, they have animals that they need to take care. Particularly, this is a Malaysian fighting fish, uh, Ikan Laga, uh, we call it local language. Uh, and there's a male and a female. And what does the male do when they like the girl? And what does the female do when they like? And how do they have the eggs? And how does baby fish looks like? But if someone doesn't feed the fish, the fish will die. Then we cannot see baby fish. So, uh, another thing that I would like to bring up, that one of the effective way of working with for children is with parents. Uh, and one thing is, uh, it is easier that we do preschool education if the parents are involved. So, uh, in our preschool, uh, we really believe in engaging with parents. Uh, because first thing, parents doesn't know that it's very difficult to educate their children. All right? Uh, we see this a lot in, uh, during this COVID lockdown. Uh, parents saying, thank you, uh, thank you very much, thank you teacher, thank you letter. I didn't know spending time, uh, eight to five, Monday to Friday with my own child is so difficult. And you opened the school quickly. I don't want them anymore. I want to go back to work. So, uh, in, in our preschool, one thing is we really engage, uh, with parents. And if the parents does not want to engage with us, uh, then, uh, most probably will give you another kindergarten phone number. Uh, that would be a most straightforward thing for us to do. Uh, to cut the story short, so, um, seven years ago, uh, personally, a little bit of touch-up. I have a preschool, uh, in Malaysia. We call preschool, uh, Tadika. Um, it means, uh, four, five, six. It's under the Ministry of Education. And I also run a nursery, uh, in Bahasa called, uh, Tasca. Uh, and, uh, we do care for, um, babies, uh, infants, six months to four years old. Uh, that is under the, uh, Ministry of Welfare Department. So a little bit of, you know, information for, for, uh, students. So, uh, we started with preschool and I realised that, hey, we need to learn a little bit more about what happened before four years old, so that, uh, we can see a full picture of how does a child develop from, uh, infant to six years old. So one thing, uh, we believe in engaging with parents. Uh, and, uh, this is just one example, uh, this is a sports activities. Uh, what we see is actually the parents should be the coach to the children. And we as a trainer or a teacher is to teach and coach the parents to know how to coach the children. So, uh, this is also from my, uh, my, one of my, my projects. Uh, I do teach, uh, sports, uh, children's sports. So, uh, this is just an example to show to you that you can play with your own child. And it's very different. For the job, for the child, it is work, it is everything. But for, uh, the adult or a parent, it's considered a job to you. But what we are trying to say is you have to come to a middle ground to know that you need to come down to be a five-years-old and play with a five-years-old. And you need to come to a four-years-old and play with a four-years-old because that's how they communicate. And one of the biggest problem that we face these days is parents do not come down to the level and forgot they are five, three, or two-years-old. And you judge them and you say that, hey, how come you don't know this? How come your cousin's, uh, daughter, same as you, your nephew, your cousins, uh, same age, they can do? But they are not focusing on what this child needs. Uh, especially in the last two years, uh, a lot of children couldn't go out and play. So there's a lot of, uh, messing up. So, um... And to engage parents, uh, this is one of my biggest, uh, proudest moment. Two thousand nineteen, before COVID happens, uh, this is a sports day of three hundred people. And all parents must come. If not, you get a love letter from me, uh, red colour. Uh, because this is very important. We get to play. Uh, it was in TDDI, uh, Tamantun in Kuala Lumpur. And, uh, what we are happy is after few years of organising sports day. Um, not only the parents will join, the parents will bring their grandparents, they bring their aunties along. Uh, and it was a fun fair. They will bring the tents, uh, and they were like picnic. And everyone will get to play. Everyone. Uh, unfortunately, I can, cannot show you the ugly pictures, but parents are very ugly and very dirty because we played. Uh, and we have games, uh, for two-years-old all the way to six-years-old. And it was, uh, very, very memorable. Uh, and that's how we think that a preschool education should be. By bringing people together. And then in African proverb, it takes a village to raise a child, right? So, um, very quickly, um, I would like you to focus on the right one. How do you teach, um, young children courage? They come loaded with A, B, C and one, two, three. You don't need to teach them that. And a lot of things is like resilience and courage. They have to experience themselves. So in preschool education, again, uh, I'm from a very small preschool. Uh, but what we believe in, we, we have so many teachers. Combined, we have so many years of experience of so many children. A, a lot of times, we think that young children need to experience themselves. They cannot work on concept. For your information, uh, okay, I, I don't want to break, okay? But, uh, studies says, and you can read a lot, that children will only learn concepts after the age of ten-years-old. So it doesn't help for a child to learn things conceptually besides learning physically, sensory-wise, and also experience-wise. Okay? How to teach, I won't give up. It's very difficult. So, um... So, okay, I'm conscious of the time. Now, another thing that I'm happy, uh, what's my job? My job is to bring the outside thing to the school. Um, and one of the things I'm very proud is we had a camping in the school with real fires. Uh, they barbecued and our parents supported us. Uh, and, uh, yeah, you'll be surprised. And of course, they will cry, uh, and night they will ask for, I need meal from my teacher. And my teacher was like, huh, I don't have meal to give you. Uh, there will be some funny moments. Uh, we found out that children sleepwalk, uh, they cry. Uh, but I can guarantee you that that night has given them superpowers that I don't need my parents anymore. And parents, uh, surprisingly, my, our parents from our school, uh, the next week say, Uncle Joe, could you organise another time so that I have time to go and, uh, go out with my husband? I want to go on a date. Can you just organise another night? So, uh, at this moment, uh, 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 what we need and realise is also parents need some time away from the children. Uh, and in the modern times, uh, this is a luxury. Uh, it is really a luxury because our parents, especially in the city, uh, Johor Bahru is also a city. Uh, by the way, I'm from Skudai, just in case you don't know. I'm from the one very bad school, used to be a very bad school, uh, uh, secondary school in Skudai, next to you, very, very close by. So, um, as I was saying about this, uh, and I will share a little bit about, uh, our, about our teachers as well. But through this, uh, camping trip, it's very hard to do. If you have never worked in a preschool before, this is like the, the highest goal of the highest goal. First, the parents allow them to come. And this was last year, when we was allowed during pandemic. Uh, there was a lot of communication with parents. Of course, COVID will happen and it might happen. Uh, but nonetheless, we decided that it is important for children to experience it. And we decided to go it and thankfully, uh, nothing happened. And the teachers were very tired, uh, but it's worth one. So, um, just to give you another example, okay? You see the left and the right. So what is my job as a owner of a preschool? Is to actually bring the teachers level up. So on the left-hand side, if you look at the slides, are my teachers going on a real camping trip. Um, and I can tell you, many people have not been to a camping before. Huh? There's, the toilet is not in my tent? There is no fan? So hot? The toilet is outside? All right? Uh, it's so dark. What do I do? So, uh, of course, the, uh, very many funny stories happen. Uh, but on the left-hand side is the first ever, first ever, uh, as a thank you trip to my teachers. Uh, decided to do a very simple one and we, and it was raining that night. And it was very funny because rain go inside the... Uh decided to do a very simple one and we, and it was raining that night and it was very funny because rain go inside the tent. And teachers cannot sleep the whole night, but I think that's quite good. So, uh different times, but it's related. A lot of times, we want to do the things in the school, but we don't know how to, and that's a fact. And no much, uh how much education we go through, uh we need hands-on experience uh to run the activities for children. So that's one. And the other one, I'm something very uh proud of is actually we had our first uh Johan Olympics, Olympics. Um during uh lockdown, eh there's a homework for teachers because they like to give homework, so I give teachers homework. Uh they're required to walk two kilometers a week, uh and it's very easy to track. Everyone has a phone nowadays, a watch nowadays, uh but it's very funny. Do you know, okay, everyone who can type? Do you know how many steps do you walk i- in a day? Okay, type, 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 type. How many steps? I don't go in Google lah, no time to Google, just guess. Okay, I'll guess, wow, 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 this is very embarrassing, okay. How many steps, how many steps, wow, thirteen thousand, they're not last, thirteen thousand, they were including shopping. Right, including shopping. So, eh and it very surprisingly, when I asked my teachers to go and walk two kilo, ah, two kilometers, cannot, my amped pit will be painful. Cannot, cannot, doctor say cannot, my stomach cannot, uh then they would use a lot of uh woman things on the uncle Joe. Which is a barely a guy, uh and not, not really, haha, okay, so. Um but I believe that we need to move as humans as well. So, uh through a series, we were locked down in our own self, in our own houses. Uh and we had to do this, so that it's something that I have to organize. And and after we did it, this is together with standard charted, uh K L Marathon virtual walk. And we decided to go to a stadium and together we do it. So, uh and a day, you will walk within three thousand to five thousand, depends on how you drive. You drive to very, very, your lecture hall, your house right in front of your house, that is three thousand. But if you can walk a little bit, you're part a little bit far, you walk to go and buy your lunch, it's around four to five thousand, and you do it every day. And for five kilometers, you can go and Google and find out how many steps, it's easily achievable. Uh and when we organize it together, then you can see your friends. And peer learning is something that preschool is meant to be, right? And in preschool, I will go back a little bit about preschool education. Um children of today does not need to learn academic literacy, they are loaded with software. Uh but rather, it's the social interaction. Why should I share my toy with you? My toy, my mommy buy for me, I don't need to share your toy, but I also want your toy. Ow, alright, ow, yes. Okay, so, um this is what I'm trying to say, that preschool of today. Is no longer preschool of yesteryears. Uh and while we keep certain things that is very, very basic, and I think we have deviated a lot. Uh and a lot of aspects that the primary school and secondary school and unfortunately, college and university. Uh due to many, many reasons, uh are not able to do and provide, uh and. Zero to six years old is one of the biggest learning points of a uh human being. And one of the areas that we need to learn is social interaction, human interaction. How to work with another human being. So, um okay, another thing, what we do, um this is an experiment. That even I have to convince my teachers, uh we rented a university's uh athletic field. Uh and we bring all the children to go there and uh run for two hours like hamster. And you'll be surprised, they can run for three hours non-stop, whereas my teachers will be. I like, oh, I'm going to die soon, my blood pressure is coming up, I forget to take my meds and everything, and the sun is coming out. And the children can run and run and run, and and that's where my teachers realized that, hey, I need to be better, because my children can do a bit more. Uh and I can say for sure, after the running, the children are very calm. They're very obedient, they are very cooperative. And the worst case, they would just fall asleep, right? So, but it is different from the left where um the adults do it. So, again, uh this is something that I think uh we can only achieve it through hands-on activities for the adult and the young children. Uh and now because of Covid, I think we need to come up with more and more uh ideas on how to run activities for children. Because everyone is worried about Covid and the safety. But as a preschool, um to be honest, and I did share with parents, I have a town hall meeting for two hours. We talk about uh Covid S O P, what do we do, how do we do it, how do we protect? Um but one thing is very clear, is as a preschool, uh Covid is not the scariest thing. For the current moment, what we know about Covid, uh they are more scarier things for young children. For example, influenza, which is much more scary and faster, hand foot mouth disease, much more faster. And they will come to you and then they wipe their nose and then they hug you as well, so how do you run away from that? So, all these things and chicken pox is also another thing that's very, very scary. And you uh, the other one is uh pneumonia, our children cough all the time, they are fever all the time. So how do we prevent this? So, um very, lastly. This is what uh I would like to leave you with in my short presentation that we can go to Q and A, is that good? I hope I uh don't exceed too much of my time, and then we can focus a little bit on Q and A. Okay, so I'll stop sharing.
Alright, uh Joe, I assume that is the last of your presentation?
Yes, I'm done.
Okay, sorry, uh got distracted, I didn't even check time, you know.
Yeah, I I know I was a bit out already, but yeah.
Yeah, but it's okay, I think uh everyone would agree uh with me that it has been a really good presentation, uh get a very. Amazing presentation, uh inspiring as a matter of fact, um just to add on to what Joe is, does not share. Uh Joe is a child clone athlete, so uh imagine, imagine the. The stamina and the ability to run, walk, jog, cycle, swim, uh all at the same time. I can't even finish my half marathon, uh Joe, still training at the moment, uh but I think I can go there, hmm.
Definitely.
One can go there, yeah.
I I I will just very quickly, just uh um to ask for your information and make you feel better. I had, I had a heart attack, I nearly died two years ago. So, um so, uh yes, but the conclusion is. Uh by very weird facts that I had a heart attack, hundred percent block in one of my arteries. Uh but the conclusion with many, many doctors that exercise is still very important for your daily life, and I was safe because of my exercise. So please, everyone, go and move your ass and uh exercise.
Okay, so, uh that's from Joe, uh here that uh for those who are less than hundred steps. Especially for us, if we're teaching every day sitting down, uh you'll be surprised, uh go, go and check your phone. It records everything, um before I open the session for everyone to start your Q and A. Uh I want to be the, the person who will hijack the uh the Q and A first. Um so, now, uh I caught a point that you mentioned, Joe, early on. Um about confidence, uh is something that is very hard to teach. Uh to be honest, I don't know how to teach confidence, and I think among our university students, they still have confidence issues. So can you share with us, how do you do it with your, your children? Do you call them kids, children, uh or do you call them by their name? That's another question, so go ahead, uh how do you teach confidence?
You do know that you're putting me in a no-win situation, right? You do know that, right, okay, if I, if I, if I say you, if I say you, then eh, I'm teaching young children, but cannot, you are so much of an adult, all of you are like. Master students, right, then again, uh uh I don't have a technical uh con- theory, I. So, very quickly, again, thank you everyone for giving me a chance, uh so. Uh confidence, I think, learned from doing, right? Uh and confidence is not what people give you, is from inside. Again, uh I'm not a professional, uh I'm declaring it very loudly. Uh but I think from my own experience and from what we see, for example, like scissors and cutting. Uh it's not just important to teach children finger skills, uh to cut with their dominant hand, but it's also the, the other hand. Whether they like it or not, but doesn't matter, but you get confidence when you're good at something. And as a teacher, as a school, is to create the environment for them to do more. They might not like it, true, that's where we fight with parents, why do you do the same thing altogether? Ah, teacher, again, scissors, yesterday scissors, no, your daily update today, scissors again, why, yeah? Because they have not learned the basic minimum of competency. So, uh and then we already know, if your fingers are no good, they cannot write later. And then the parents will say, eh, why my children's writing, I cannot calligraphy? But my friend's daughters are, wow, already two years can become Superman at flight, but why my son cannot? So, um so confidence come from doing in a very small scale, uh and from doing many, many things. So, what we do is we offer them the opportunity to see more things, that they know more things, they think they know more things. And they will do something about it, and we allow them to do within the defined parameter. And of course, as a, I used to be a student as well, uh of course, here, there are some stu- professional students. Some of them, you are also working adults, um I think we all get confidence from doing a lot. So the second thing is whether we call them children or kids or everything, uh when you are angry, you call that name, same thing like some parents. Ah, ah, Tian Ju Bing, uh when you are angry, you call full name, right? When you're not angry, friend, friend, you call, eh, Tian Tian, Ping Ping, uh say, ah, it's right, that's what you do. Uh so, uh I think when we call them, we call them what they respond best with. Uh I think that's the easiest, uh and there's no, uh and we also encourage uh friends. To call teachers by name, I think it's easier, because we need to come down to that level. But of course, it's easier to shout at teacher, when you just say, teacher, he pulled my hair, so I hope that answers the question.
Okay, uh okay, thank you, Joe, for that, um now, anyone would like to initiate the first question? Go ahead, uh okay, uh Chen Si, uh I saw your hand uh being raised up, so go ahead.
Yes, and how do you control your temper when dealing with the kids?
Oh, okay, um yeah, I assume, uh Chen Si, you're asking me as a teacher, right? Uh I don't think you can control temper, uh temper is not something that you can control, uh because you first you want some awareness. So for me, it's very easy, uh we have a no policy of hitting uh shouting at children. Uh but I, as a owner, as a founder of my school, I. I'm the first one to apologize to parents if they do hear my teachers uh shout, uh I'm the first one. Uh of course, I also told to my teachers that if we can shout and solve everything. Uncle Joe will shout every day, so I become rich, if anger can solve everything. So a lot of things come with awareness, and awareness from why the teacher is angry. And why the teachers expect different things. Uh and one of my job is to help the teachers to see that children comes in different levels. What I'm trying to say is adults, you forgot you are adults, and you forgot who you are talking with. That's why we have a child-centric, we need to understand that they are five years old. Five years old children by science book, their brain is this size, only your fist. So I will go to my teachers and remind them, are you going to use your brain and get angry at a this brain? It doesn't make sense, but many teachers have been teaching many years and they have certain expectations. So, uh I don't think you can control, manage anger, but you also need allow teachers to express themselves. So, uh activities, uh that's why hands-on activities, one of it is we do a lot of hands-on activities, not just theory teaching. Uh I'm sure Doria is having a lot of a challenges as a adult teacher. Because you work on a conceptual and you expect everyone to have that conceptual level, children, you need to go down. They don't talk properly, uh that is also another thing we need to understand, right? I am angry, a five-year-old will come and say, Chen Si, I'm angry, but you need to understand, do they know what is angry? They don't know, angry means I want to eat ice cream now, and you don't give me, I angry you, but that's not angry. So, they are just not sure what to say, but they learn the TV and everything, and daddy, mommy fighting and everyone, they are angry, okay, they capture that. So it's important for us to do more, so we can only introduce this. Teachers do more activities, teachers talk more on a level, communicate, talk properly. And of course, uh as a person who run a preschool, my job to make sure that my teachers always remember. That we need to go down to that level, right? You, you, you cannot control anger, especially adults, you have your own issues, uh that is another thing that I think. Okay, I, I'm sure, uh let me put it this way, a- as a Malaysian or Singaporean, we always blame government, this is a very social thing, right? It's a joke, uh but we hope that more people can do something about it. I'm sure in China as well, some of you are very happy about your government, some of you are not. Uh these are the small, small things, we hope that, you know, society can pick, take note of. Uh Covid doesn't help, because we are locked down, I think more people are getting more angry and they don't know why they are angry. So, uh we need to. Be aware of this, anger is a big issue, but if you understand, then my teachers have lower topics to be angry. Because every time I show them, you see this, you want to get angry at this, your brain so big, you're married, you've got boyfriend, you've got car. You've got salary, you've got handphone, you've got iPhone, you want to get angry at five years old, don't get angry, let's talk to the children, find out why. Oh, Ken, I hope I answered your question.
Okay, to uh to last see, before you come in, uh Nalini, uh I saw your question in the chat function.
Oh, yeah.
Would you like to ask directly? Nalini, are you still there?
I want to ask about how, how you teach them patiently? Then how you teach the student, good student and poor student, there's any different way?
Okay, um okay, I'm going to be technical with you, uh thank you for your question, Nalini. Um to me, there's no good or or bad, alright, so technically, what is good and what is bad? So I assume, again, very quickly, assumption is a model of, so uh I don't make an ass out of you and me, okay? So, assumption is no good, right? So for young children, it's very straightforward, what they can do, what they cannot do. So if you label them cannot do as bad or or bad student, th- then we have a big issue, your expectation is not correct. Uh therefore, you get angry, so but if you work by, say, that seven years old, they still need to go to primary school. That's the fact in Malaysia, we all, seven years old, by law, we have to go to a school. Uh so what can we help them and? Plan it out, what is the minimum that we can help? Uh you remember scaffolding, remember progress, we cannot do everything. So communication with the parents is very clear expectation, uh if you said that, then we just execute what we can, we, we manage what we can. Alright, so, uh there's no good or bad, uh so I hope that is very, very clear. Uh we can only repeat and let the children learn, uh that is the best we can do. Of course, we have assessment, uh we can evaluate the children. Uh but for us, we don't have examinations, because ninety-five points on the number. Or English doesn't tell me anything that their English is good, or mathematics is good, and ninety-five percent for a three-years-old? Come on, what does it mean? It doesn't say anything. So, but we can only say that can they repeat it a lot of times? If they can consistently repeat something, they have achieved it, move on next one. So uh we communicate with parents very clearly. If not, then I will give you another kindergarten phone number because they can do magic, please go there, uh there's nothing wrong with that. So I hope I answer your question, right?
Okay, uh Nalini, thank you for that question, uh Tulasi, you're next.
Uh good evening, Mister Joe.
Hi, good evening.
Yeah, can I call you Uncle Joe?
Sure, please.
Okay, I think Nalini already asked, but but before that, uh because yours, ah I want to, uh what is that, uh give you thumbs up lah. Okay, thumbs up, very good, actually, like, um uh before, uh Nalini already asked just now, how you will, what is that? Of course, the student will have different kind of skills, knowledge, everything, right?
Yeah.
So you are, uh how you will handle them, is that you will place them to different classes? Or in the same class, or and another one, can you please give me? Because we are teaching secondary students, of course, the method of uh handle them is different. So maybe you can give me some suggestion, how to handle the student with different qualification, different skills, different knowledge in same class, but how to handle them? Thanks.
Okay, thank you, thank you, thank you for your question, thank you for your praise, um. Um you have to be practical. Uh I think again, uh Chen Si's question is also when, why we are angry, sometimes when we are angry, we are actually angry at ourselves. Uh because you never sit down and say that what I can do and what I cannot do. I'll give you a very pro tip, uh because I'm also an athlete, uh I've also attended sports science level one. Uh part of what I want to learn more about young children. Uh how does an Olympic athlete manage his or her emotion? Okay, so this is how did you pay money, I paid money to get learn, so you better listen properly, I tell you this. So this is because of Doria, all right, she's a good friend of mine, so, okay, I need to give some value. Because of all the speakers, I'm the least qualified, so I need to prop myself up. So how does an Olympic, you are there, the the competition, whether it's backminton or the hundred percent, a hundred meter, now it's going to go, what can you do? You can only control what you can control. You cannot control what other people are doing. You cannot control what the weather, the moon, the sun come up, cannot, right? The air cold, not cold, you cannot. So you can only control what you control. And that is the key. So a sports athlete will say that I have to train, this is my training, I've already trained like that. On the race day, on the competition day, I will just execute exactly what I have learned and practice and 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 do. So very quickly, uh Tulasi, when you uh deal with uh secondary schools or young children, first and foremost, you must be very clear what is practical, what is not practical. And if you want to do unpractical things, then you add more things on your brain, uh no good. And that's why you get angry, that's why you get angry at other people, because the goal is not very clear. Uh so for us in preschool, we actually meet parents many times a year. Uh very quickly, also one thing I needed to bring, uh parents of today is very different. My mother wants to go to see my preschool teacher and my primary school teacher to find out what is wrong with me so that she will repeat and me at home. Because the teacher say, Uncle Joe talks a lot in the class. But he doesn't like to write A B C. Auntie, can you ask him to go back every time? My mother wants to know, because my mother is working, has no time for uh at home, uh and she wants to learn and reconfirm. But parents today doesn't want to go to school to talk to teachers because they think that by going to school, something wrong with my child. Uh uh that is where the communication is not happening. So coming back to your question, Tulasi, is first is find out what is practical. Uh if a child, if a boy A is like that, then set a practical step for boy A. Uh girl B, even though in the same secondary school can be from one, from two, from three, from four, you have to decide what is practical, let let decide first, right? I know it's very difficult to have thirty children in a class, uh students in a class, it's very difficult, all of them are from two, right? But as I've said uh again at the beginning, they all come with different background, uh different schools, different state, different culture background. Uh but you just need to set that. And then your plus or minus within that. Uh same thing like athletes, if you know that you cannot be a gold medalist, then don't pretend to be a gold medalist, you are there to learn. So next year, next Olympic, you can be better, setting of goals. Uh so uh that is important and set goals with your your secondary students. Uh people motivate well with goals. They might not talk like that, uh but don't forget, you have to come down to that level. Uh secondary schools, they think they are the best in the world, but they are just twelve to seventeen. Yeah, they think they are good, of course, when they compare to primary school, they are good. So once a while, you need to set some goals with them. And again, bring many topics from outside, because the world, their world is too small. And in preschool, that's what we are trying to do. Uh we go out, uh we bring a lot of topics, we bring animals into the school so that they learn more things exposed. Exposure is limitless. All right, and and if you bring more interesting topics, teaching the same thing, uh you just hope out of the thirty, more than fifty percent engage with you and you use those to engage the others. That's practical. But again, I'm not a professional, so I can handle secondary school children by my concept. That's how I work with um international students when I was doing leadership, yeah. Okay, I hope I answered your question.
Uh thanks Tulasi for that question, Li Yuan.
Good afternoon, teacher, I have three questions, uh oh, what are basic skill, uh what basic skill skills must a new children learn? How many children in a class and how to explore children's interests?
Okay, I got two and three, I cannot get one, can you repeat number one? What is on one, number one question?
What basic skill skills must new children learn?
Wow, that is a very big topic, okay, but Li Yuan, I would, I'll do my best. Um what basic skills children should learn is social skills and emotional skills. I'm just shortcutting, um I hope Doria don't send this uh video out on YouTube, then uh the whole Malaysia will hate me, parents will hate me, educators will hate me, the government will hate me. So uh uh I think first and foremost, zero to seven years old, what they can learn? They can only learn about themselves and surrounding. Uh and the best thing is their friends' uh emotion, uh to start thinking. Social skills, uh how to care for themselves. So I think that is the most important thing. Of course, in then you talk about literacy, how to count, how to write, how to read. Um I think for me, the coming year, I want to do big in communication, talk, talk properly. Talk properly, I think is very important because now people cannot talk properly. They will just keep quiet, then they get angry and they hope you can read my mind, cannot, so very hard. So basic skills, uh and we introduce all kind, my children, six years old, they have to uh fry an egg with a fire. Uh five years old must uh do bread, jam, uh uh and five and six must serve and make this food for four years old. So uh we give responsibilities. So these are skills, uh they wash toilets, that's the first thing. If your parent come interview to preschool, the first thing is, we have to ask them, are they okay if we ask the children to wash toilets? And if the parents say that, no, why? My house, I got three mates. Then I give you another kindergarten phone number, that's simple as that. So uh then number of students, I think it varies, I have a three preschools necessarily, so uh Covid is not very kind to us in that sense, uh numbers have dropped. So I have like three, four, or ten students. And then the third one, I can't remember, Li Yuan, sorry, I'm a bit old, what's the third question? Doria, what was the third question?
I only managed to catch one and two.
Uh Li Yuan, what's the third question?
Yeah.
Uh how many children in your class?
Uh that's the second question.
Second question, the third question?
Question is how to explore children's interests?
Oh, uh you cannot explore children's interest, you can only show. Because children come from different, again, if you accept, again, now we'll very quickly touch on Tulasi, they come from different states, they come from different uh uh provinces, if you want, from China, like from Guangdong, Heilongjiang, uh from Malaysia, Malacca, Johor, they all come differently, right? First thing, you don't know them. So again, maybe I just backtrack a little bit, for all teachers, you have to understand your children very well. Know what they can do, they cannot do, what they like, why they like Pokemon, why they like pink color, why they like unicorn, and not why, what, sorry, what they like, then you engage with them. So uh and for me, uh Li Yuan, you just have to show many things. And hopefully, you see how they engage, then you try, because children don't even know what they like. They think they know because their friend got a very nice watch, digital watch, they also want. That is from the concept of ownership, the more I have, the more toys I have, the better, but it does not work that way, humans work that way. Uh guys, I want big car, I don't know why, I want fast car, I don't know why, but they want it, because other people have it, right? So uh get to know them, show them more things they cannot see at home. And that's why we have camping, we have cooking, they wash toilets, they have never washed toilets at home. So uh they have to uh clean their bowls, do it. Uh and then when they do it, you praise them, then they say, hey, I'm doing something I never done before. Competency, yay, then you're first praise them. Uh but praise them, do not praise them for something universal, praise them for their effort, because what they need is effort. Again, I have to apologize upfront, uh Doria, what I'm saying and speaking is very much on my experience and has no theory whatsoever.
That's, that's interesting, actually.
Ah, yes.
Good, it's good to to know.
Well, I hope it it helps, yeah, I hope it helps, right? Uh so I mean, that's one thing that.
Thank you, Jau Li, uh Li Yuan, and yeah, uh the, hopefully, we answer, answer all the three questions that you asked just now.
Yeah.
Um Anis?
Hello, good evening.
Hi.
Hi, so my question is, uh what do you think about teaching a foreign language to the student at early age? And well, which language that you think that you want to teach them, your student, second or third uh language, something like that?
Okay, um okay, first and foremost, if you hear some uh dogs barking, I apologize for that, that's my own dog going crazy. So um uh so now, one good thing is we are in Malaysia, uh we are, it's a fact that we need to survive in many languages. But you talk to two schools of linguist uh professors, because I'm also exploring uh language programs in my own. Um and uh I will be upfront, uh Chinese is a most difficult language to learn. Unfortunately, in Malaysia, we need to learn Mandarin, uh because it's just life, right? Unfortunately, uh and 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 if you're in China, you have no choice, but I can guarantee you, Chinese students, uh I know a little bit, even Chinese students from Taiwan, you don't like Taiwan, but pretend you like Taiwan, Ch- China, uh Hong Kong, uh even Singaporean, that is very good, Singapore is a very good case study. Singaporeans don't even like Mandarin, uh because it's very difficult and it's based on picture, but there's too many strokes and children cannot learn that age. Whereas um uh on the other side, English, Bahasa is easier because it's universal, there's a lot of YouTube, uh that can help you. So it's very funny, many people have asked me this question, including parents. I would say that children can learn many things. Uh the only thing is you don't force them to follow grammar or produce. Um so they should be able to learn, because in Malaysia, we have already learned two, three languages. Because you look at that, when they play at the roadside in the Kampung, in the village, they can switch easily, because they can see, ah, this is my Malay friend, I speak Bahasa. That's my Chinese friend, I speak Chinese, they they can switch by their own and they didn't go to preschool and everything. So the learning capability, I believe, they are very wide, but you don't force them to say, now you speak one language, you must everything one language, because they only go by needs. Hey, uh Ahmad, I like to eat the Chichong fun. They will say that because they know Chichong fun, my, but at home, they eat Chichong fun is a food, uh if you don't know, or fried rice, uh right? But they will talk to Ahmad because Ahmad understand Ahmad is a Malay boy, uh uh and he knows that, eh, we talk English, but the food, I cannot remember what is the the food's name in 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 Bahasa or in English, I said Chichong fun. So eh, connect, let them do that. So I think it is possible because it's proven, you can learn many languages, but you cannot compete. And the problem in preschool is the language syllabus, I don't like this word, but at three years old, the boy already know a cup, is C U P, cup. But only at five years old, they learn how to write the Chinese cup with many stroke. They're like, hey, why am I learning cup again? They will get confused, because Mandarin is a very difficult and you need to have steps and strokes and everything. So that make teaching very difficult and they need to write in three, English, Bahasa and Mandarin for some students. So there's more things to learn, because there was a topic, why Finnish students, they are so good, uh Americans, they are so good, because they only learn one, or Swedish, they only learn one. But the fact remains, I think they can learn more, you just need to be very practical, what language, at what level, and you just teach him and hopefully they learn. And you don't measure their success, because you have learned three years of Spanish, must be good as three years of English, because you speak at home at three years, uh it's just not practical. So it is possible, and I think they can learn, in Malaysia, it's three, if you're from China, I think you can learn two, Mandarin and English is not a problem. Uh what language to learn, I think that is the community language first. Uh then in the future, if you want to, like, for example, many of our communities, they need to, are outside of Malaysia, uh they need to learn English, because English is a universal business language and and you can go Oxford and everywhere. So I think culture language, make sure we, make sure, uh if we are a preschool, we have to make sure the Malay boy speaks Malay properly, the Chinese boy speaks properly. Uh and of course, uh for our uh Indian friends, we can't teach Tamil because it's the hardest language to learn, but we encourage them to speak and then we try to understand a few words and engage with them. But in preschool, those are the two languages that we need to encourage, uh English, Bahasa and Mandarin. And don't expect them to produce the same level, it's okay to get uh one eh higher level than the other. Uh what language, I think, yeah. I mean, there's many, many women now speak Korean because they watch too much Opa, it's possible. Right?
Thank you, uh Anis, for that question, uh anyone else with a question? Uh you can just unmute yourself and start asking.
Hello, hi.
Yes, hi.
Hi, Joe, I'm Vickrey.
Hi, Vickrey.
But number one, uh kudos to you, because uh from what I see, you don't only develop kids, but at the same time, in the leadership wise, you you also develop your teachers. So congratulation to you.
Thank you, thank you.
And uh so my question is, um I I I have four questions, actually. The first one is that uh uh should I ask you in one go or one by one?
One, one go.
One go, okay. Number one is, um uh uh I'm asking this not as a teacher, I I'm actually a teacher, I could say that I'm good with my students at school. But I consider myself as not as good as uh handling my students in school as compared to handling my kids at home.
Understand.
Especially, especially my my first daughter, especially when when she's throwing a tantrum. So the question is, how do I negotiate with her when she is throwing a tantrum? Because I think, I believe that it has to be very careful, it it plays with the emotion, right? That is number one. Number two, um what should I do as parents to continue what uh the teachers had delivered at school? As parents, eh? And then um the que- the next question is, how is, how important is formal education, formal class?
Mm-hmm.
For the kids?
Mm-hmm.
That is question number three, and the last question is, how do you handle demands from uh parents?
Okay, I'll reverse. Okay, I'll reverse, the last one is parents.
Uh, how, how do you handle demand?
Okay, demand from parents, formal education.
Mm-hmm.
Then, uh, negotiate, then tantrum.
All right.
Right? Okay, I hope so, so, uh, okay, uh, sorry, thank you, thank you for give a question, I will try to answer as best I can, uh. But let me remind, I'm not professional, um, so how old is your daughter?
She's going six this year.
Okay, cool, so just give a context, right, so, um. First and foremost, it's never too late to understand your child, let me put this this way. Uh, I'm trying to understand my own parents at sixty years old, it's tough, uh, really tough. So, um, let's put it this way, first and foremost, it's never too late to understand your own child. And if you believe in scaffolding, you believe in progress, it doesn't matter what level, you just have to try, right? So at six years old, you can say that, oh no, I've missed out the last six years, but it's never too late, because they are growing. And if you go by progress, you can always try to understand your daughter first, um. Tantrum can be many, many reasons, uh, but I think, uh. As a parent is to understand, try to understand why it happened, not ask them, because it never makes sense. Very quickly, I read, I heard in a radio station, some psychiatrist was saying that, uh, okay, children, students. I just call all of you children, can you type the answer? When does a children have the skills of logic and common sense? Type the answer, give me a number from zero to forty-five years old, Uncle Joe's age. At what age does a human being acquire logic and common sense? Okay, type, type, have an answer, put your skin in the game, uh, you know, say it out, right? So just, I'm just going to, 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 to engage you a little bit. You must have a skin and game, all of your teachers be ready to commit. So how old you think, from zero, one month or one years old until forty-five years old? What age does a human acquire logic and common sense? Quickly, quickly, come on, people.
Twenty-one.
Yeah, okay, twenty-one, next, next, next.
Uh, Fikri answered thirteen, uh, Tulasi answered twelve, uh, twelve, um, Lim, six.
Yep, 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 okay, I'm, I'm reading.
Two, Ben, seven.
Can, okay, good, so now, very quickly.
Even older students or parents.
A zero to forty-five.
They don't have logic and common sense, not.
Who, who, who don't have logic and common sense?
Even older persons.
Okay, that's your expectations, eh, okay, very quickly, uh, Fikri, um, coming back to you. Uh, it's first is to understand, but I'll give you a trick, there must be a reason why they're upset. Uh, don't go too back in the historical, uh, but there must be something that's upsetting them, and they cannot tell you. So how do you handle tantrum, first and foremost, uh, allow them to have tantrum, I think, but with a guideline. To say that if you cry, or at least what I do is, if a child is crying, I don't know what's wrong, I say, okay, I let you cry. But you cannot cry more than two minutes, you look at the, the watch there, two minutes, then Uncle Joe will come and ask you why, what happened? Not why, but what happened, okay, so give them, they, they need a guideline, they need a boundary, so it's okay, let children behave. Uh, and something might have silly, you are a big ass adult, and sometimes upset you for no reasons, right? So give them that, and find out why. Uh, so very quickly to answer, according to that person on the radio, is twenty-one years old. So what it means that zero to twenty-one, including secondary school, they don't have logic. But then you say, sometimes, good, but I don't give them money, or I school them, they get angry. What it means, they are not consistent applying logic in their thinking. By some scientists, twenty-one years old is consistent, what does it mean, it's always happening consistently? Before twenty-one, sometimes can, sometimes cannot, that is inconsistency, but it happened, I'm not denying they don't have logic. You, uh, 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 if a girl gets a flower from a boy, they are happy, even though it's secondary school. You give them one thousand ringgit, they're happy, they're going to buy one thousand two hundred ringgit shoes, I don't understand, it's not logical, then it's not consistent. So, so, eh, so how do you handle is to understand? Uh, but first thing, from understanding that you know how to engage, know that she's six years old, go down to that level and understand. And work with her as a, I don't want to say friend, but work at her six years old level. Find out what is triggered her and her understanding, what's her angry about? Maybe the angry is because her friend didn't want to friend her, or her friend say that your hair is ugly, I, I, I do, seriously. But most worry is between you, and you need to start talking to them, and by allowing the to, through tantrum, uh, with limited time. Uh, hopefully, they will tell you why they are angry, what caused them angry, or upset or tantrum, uh, that is the easiest way. Okay, uh, the other way that I think modern people are now more worried about, uh, I think is a lot of times. Um, again, I might be overstepping my, my boundaries, it comes from diet. And exercise and activities, just go out, cook inside, they don't know how to tell you. Uh, again, sometimes, uh, what's the name, uh, Chenzi, and also some of you, how to be patient and everything, sometimes. Children don't know how to tell you, hey, I feel I'm so down today, they can't, they cannot. They would just cry and tantrum, that's all they know, one or zero, so let them and engage with them. I think that's the easiest, okay, Fikri, never too late, um, the other one is, uh, last two.
Okay, uh, one question, uh, from Fikri is what to do as parents to continue what teachers do at, um, at, at the center? Uh, then another question that he also asked is, uh, how important is formal class, is it?
Okay, formal education, oh wow, you're putting me another new win situation, Fikri, uh. I mean, you and me, we work for, for, for authorities, right, so, okay, uh, I think. Let's work on minimum competencies, okay, I think very quickly, uh, Malaysia is not very strong in vocational. Uh, I just give an example, uh, I have many friends who, while I know them. They are going to Australia to be a painter, plumber, TV repairman, because it pays more. And if the sun is more than twenty-six degrees, they don't have to work, and you still need to pay them the deposits of three hundred Aussie dollars, which is nine hundred ringgit. So, I think, um, we need to define what is formal education. Uh, and a lot of people now saying that I can learn everything from YouTube, which is small truth, small, small truth. So, let's work on minimum competency, they can read, can talk, can acquire, can read, uh, that's minimum one level. Then it's either technical skills or non-technical skills, so, uh, you're asking me, I'm not sure what age. But I'll just say that, let's work on primary school and secondary school. Uh, I think we just have to understand that at every stage, they need to go to the next stage. What they choose with it is not our problem, it's, it's their parents' problem, their own problem, uh, and, and if you know. Uh, one thing is, I would say in, in Europe, they have gap year. In, in Germany, it takes ten years to finish a, a degree, and the government allows it, uh, education. You can go out, have fun, get married, have kids, and come back and finish your degree, they allow it, so it's lifelong learning. So, and we solve the problem that we have students who don't have experience come out in a, uh, in the society, in the work. Uh, that, that's one, or we have, uh, very experienced people with no people qualifications. So, uh, there's no one straight way lah, so formal education, but I think. Primary school is a very big key, and I hope, uh, for everyone here, if you are in secondary schools. Uh, it pays a little bit to, to find out what happens in primary school. So that you know why your secondary school student are like that. Why they are like that, you try to find out first, ah, because they didn't do that, so you know that, hey, you, uh, secondary is. Fifteen, sixteen, eighteen years old, why you behave like that, because in primary school, they didn't have that, so they brought over. So formal education, and, and, and I think how you work with the schools, I think communication. Start, just go and talk to them, find out, don't question them. Uh, I, we are both teachers, right, but we don't like each other, uh, that, that's, that's a problem. So, uh, uh, because, uh, we think we don't understand each other. So focus on the child, yeah, Fikri, go to the school, talk to the child, that's okay, I just want to know what's happening with my daughter. Uh, let's understand her, it's not about me, it's not about you, uh, let's focus on the child, and a lot of times, if you approach that. Then I think it's, it works, and I think some of you might need to talk to some parents of your students. To focus on the child, not because, uh, I'm right, you're wrong, you should do this, I should do that, uh, just focus on the child, hopefully it works. Yeah, Fikri, I hope I answer all your questions, uh, uh, yeah, but I think you guys are doing much more work than me.
Okay, uh, Joe, we are closing off soon.
Okay.
That, okay, before I bring Lim into, uh, the picture, Nalini has an extra question. Uh, how to make students sit in one place, this is from Nalini.
Uh, depends on what age, but they don't.
Actually, she's six years old, the teacher always complain, and this, uh, she can't, uh, sit in one place. Because of she, uh, hyperactive, uh, it's disturbing other students.
They don't, they don't sit, I mean, children are not supposed to sit down.
Hmm.
So, 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 so they don't, so, but you need to manage that they need to have exercise, they play. So make sure, I assume it's your daughter, it cannot be you, you are not a preschool teacher, right, so you are putting me on a, on a, on a stage as well, so. And, uh, they need to exercise, like you. Need to talk to people, if you don't talk, all of you human being, you go crazy, it doesn't matter where you are, from China, Malaysia, you are married, not married. Uh, uh, your boyfriend don't talk to you, you also get angry, you talk too much, also get angry, your wife talk to you also angry, don't talk to you also angry. Humans need to talk, young children, they just need to play, they need to battery, right? Charge, finish, charge, finish, that's all they do. So, six years old are not supposed to sit down, five years old not supposed to sit down, you want the, uh, six months baby to start crawling, right? Then suddenly you say stop, cannot, so, uh, let them play, but again, guided territory, you say, okay, boundary. Teacher, are you giving my daughter time to play, can you help to just give them time to play? Uh, there's morning time, there's afternoon time, if not, then you have to back up. Uh, we can let them play, there's too much, they don't know how to tell you, I have too much energy, mommy, I, I don't know what to do, so that's why they run around.
She came back and cried, she said, the teacher always called her.
Yes, so, so.
In one place.
Yeah, yeah, so the, the teach, I mean, it, it parameters, if it's practical, then it's okay, but if it is beyond. Then it's just, uh, again, I have a lot of experience with my body, uh, because I'm an athlete. Sometimes it's just our body, we, we cannot stand, flat feet is another big problem, I cannot be an army guy. Uh, you know, in Malaysian army, I think in China as well, in Australia, if you have flat feet, you cannot be an army beans, you cannot stand for long. Then you have to like, do this, and then go hang wall, I, I'm always like that, then people say I'm not very respectful. No, if they got my feet, I cannot stand properly, and so I cannot become army, right, so, young children are not supposed to sit, so, uh, but you can manage. Because if they don't sit at six years old, the teacher is pressured, no, because the, your daughter will go to primary school. Then you get a lot from the primary school, the teacher will just bang you, so your children is in the WhatsApp, in the family, uh, parents group. Uh, uh, hello, your daughter is no good, your daughter is disturbing others, but because the primary school teacher got forty students. And she can have no time to talk, so there's no solution, except for you to help. Uh, talk to the teachers nicely, and, and say, can you let my daughter play a bit in the morning? So then he use finish, the battery half, then you talk, they can understand, okay, cool.
You.
Yeah.
Last question, Lim, uh, can you come in?
Yeah, uh, hi, uh, Joe, uh, so.
Hi.
I think I'm the only one who not qualified to call you Uncle Joe, so, just call you Joe, just kidding.
Okay.
Before I, before I go into the question, uh, just now during your, your answer to Fikri, uh, question, right? You mentioned about one thing, um, uh, there's something that I also trying to do, uh, like, like for recent years. Like I found my secondary school student with some specific problems, then I start to think why. Why they cannot do this in this age of thirteen or fourteen? Then after that, I start to, uh, I start to reorganizing my curriculum for my primary school student.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I think it's quite, uh, it's quite effective, so we found a problem, and then actually. Uh, when we think why our student cannot do this, cannot do that, actually, it sometimes reflect to their previous training. Or the previous knowledge or education that, uh, have already obtained from these stage, yeah. So I just a little bit sharing that, uh, that's really effective. Um, so coming to my question, um, uh, as we know, like, uh, currents, uh. We have, uh, quite a lot of social problems arise, even, uh, to the, to the, uh, young age, um, children, right? For example, the divorce, the single parent family, and then, or some, uh, student that experienced the passing away of their parents. At a very young age, so, um, it lead, it has to lead to the psychological or the mental destruction. Uh, of this kind of children, and it has that impact on their learning process. Because of these negative maybe emotion or experiences, it has become, uh, some problem, the impact on their learning process. So, um, may I know, how do you handle the children, if you have this kind of children? How do you handle, do you give them a special or, or, or any different methods of, of, you know, handling them? Teaching them, guiding them?
Okay, thank you very much, Lim, for your question, but just to be naughty, I think you should ask this question to the next few speakers after me. Because I think they are more qualified than me. Okay. Yeah, okay, okay, now, now, also very, uh, very, uh, I think I, I might have put an idea in all of you, I need to just quickly touch it. Uh, stop asking why, uh, because I use it metaphorically, uh, a lot of finding of why, actually it's the what. So if, if everyone is still listening, show me a thumbs up, show me your hand that you got this, that, don't just keep asking why, but find out. That, that's find out the cause, okay, good, good, I see a lot of hands, so don't, don't, don't ask why, why, like I said, it's a very big topic. But just go and find out what, okay, so, so that's a correction I need to do. So if you are in secondary school, find out what happened in primary school, then affecting you, if you have a six-year-old child that's throwing tantrum. Find out what caused it, right, so, okay, so, um, now, Lim, you asked me a very big question, um. This is my personal opinion that actually be practical, we cannot reverse time and, and social problems. You, either you believe there is a chance or there's no chance. Uh, one of the main reasons I no longer work with university students, because not your age. Uh, or maybe, uh, for some of the students, you are in a studying student age. I don't work there, because I think it's too much work and effort for me to make a change, for me, it's very simple. The reason why I go to preschool is because I hope to retire in a better community. Where I live, Malaysia, I hope they are good people, uh, I will share you one topic, I hope it helps everyone. Uh, there's a saying in my school that there's a power of one. So, uh, married people, you will get this joke, uh, how many mother-in-laws do you need? You just need one good mother-in-law, one, you don't need two, you know, it's only one good mother-in-law, am I right? So either way, male, female, doesn't matter, uh, if you have one good boyfriend, one good mother, uh, one good boyfriend, one enough. Of course, some people want of you, want more, I don't understand why, but just one, so, uh, uh, the power of one. Uh, if you have one good honest bus driver, you got one good teacher, just one. Like Doria, I think she's doing an excellent job, you need an honest, uh, uh, salesman. You need a very hardworking, uh, uh, cleaner, you need a kind sister, just one enough. Uh, you need a loving, the, uh, grandmother, just one is enough, so the power of one. So, Lim, uh, i- if you have this approach. That anyone can be anything they can be, uh, in your students, they don't have to be lawyers. Because lawyers no more job now, seriously, you just Google, what if people sue me, they just Google. Uh, doctors, there's no, there's no need for too many doctors now, uh, I'm having headache, what should I eat? They just cut pop Google, right? So, um, they can be anything they want, so if you believe in that. Then you just have to go towards the direction that what is the next possible thing for them. Uh, it doesn't matter how they look like, how they behave, uh, because everyone is still growing. Uh, so, I wouldn't go too much on the social impact of family, of course, I acknowledge it. I acknowledge there is. All of us are eighty percent of our parents, and they are eighty percent of their parents, so it's a very long story, never, never ending. So, uh, we can only focus on now and the future, so if you are practical about it. Uh, I think what we can do is just prepare them for the next level. Uh and I think as teachers, maybe as future teachers, future educators, maybe I would say this. Um, don't do everything yourself. Uh be humble enough to ask for help. Um, you know, it can be, focus on the topic at hand, focus on your students, not about you, not about your wife, not about your husband. Not about them, uh uh focus on the topic, if it's your child, your student, uh focus on them, what they need. Provide that, then hope for the best. So hopefully the power of one will happen. Uh they cannot perform now, does not mean they cannot perform later. Uh come on, secondary school, right? All of you, you are way beyond secondary school, uh and I think it's very different from now. So if you like yourself, then you should like your students, right? Uh but there are always extreme cases, uh um so if, get help, get other people's help. Uh sometimes it's just chemistry, uh your face is ugly or they don't like your face. Uh they are children. I can guarantee you, I can manage all the children uh in my school, even though I go to go to the school. Uh often, uh because I meet a lot of externals, uh COVID and everything. Um but I can really work with them very well. So, uh that is important, that sometimes you just need to focus on them. Right? And 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 open that other people can also work with them. And sometimes when I go to school, some children just look at me and cry. They do, I'm the most lovable person, but they don't like my face and they will cry. Oh, that's it. So I will find another teacher to talk to the child. That's it, it's no big deal. So if if you can't work with your students, be it secondary, primary, or international schools, or young children. Uh very quickly, I will touch back to Fikri. Sometimes you're not the best friend, that's it. You're a father, they recognize you as a father. Your look, your sound, your smell, it's my daddy. Why would I want to be talking to my daddy, not cold? So I rather talk to someone else. So find someone else to talk to her. The objective is still the same. Find out what caused your daughter to have tantrum and what we can make it a bit better. So I hope uh everything I say helps, it'll be helpful for you. I wish you all the best. And hopefully, if you see me around, we'll just say hi to each other.
Okay, uh Joe, um I really had to hand it to you. Um originally, it's only one hour. Uh we have exceeded at at least. Almost reaching two hours, uh so um I suppose the questions and the interaction is uh is. Uh you guys find it uh enjoyable. So I, uh so thank you so much, Joe, for spending your time with us. Uh variable time as a matter of fact. Um and to uh to the rest of you in the class, uh I hope you have learned something. Uh I thi- I myself take down a lot of notes. Because for me, uh teaching at the adult level, I think I cannot teach uh at the children level. You need skills, you need, you need the patience, you need the passion as well. I think that's why, uh Joe, you enter preschool because of that, that passion to 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 have a better community. Uh after this, just by changing uh how we develop our, our, our kids. Okay, so uh before I close, any last words? Uh if you guys wanna uh say something to Joe, just go ahead, uh probably for the next one to two minutes. There's a lot of thank you at the chat function.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah, from Hani's Nalini.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Anyone else? Um anything to say, last words? So, uh I hope for the first study session, it has proven to to uh to benefit you guys. So our, what, okay, what's happening after this is next week, we won't have class.
Yay.
Yeah, so it's Raya, so Selamat Hari Raya to those um uh. Celebrating, uh for those who are not celebrating, it's still a break anyway. Uh so enjoy your holiday break, it's it's a long break as well. Uh so we'll come back uh in the following week with uh the second session of our study session. Uh around the same time as you, four P M. Uh if there's any update, I will let Lim know. Uh by the way, Joe Lim is the class rep, so he has. For the class.
Okay, thank you.
Uh so, uh okay, that's it from me. Uh Joe, any last words to the rest of them?
Uh no, I I I hope I speak clearly. I mean, just one thing, I hope that uh my English is clear enough. Uh so just to make sure that there are many students who did not respond, a good half portion. So maybe I just, you know, hopefully, uh Doria, you can help to see that the message reaches them. Uh my English is not the best.
Asking you, Joe, do you have a brunch in Skudai?
No, my friends, I'm from Skudai for your information. I have many friends in JB, uh they know what I do, uh but yeah, I know. Uh uh uh, yeah, but please go and one of the biggest problem in the industry is we, no one wants to become a preschool teacher. It's a thankless job. I mean, the same with teachers as well, it's a thankless job. Uh I think someone needs to do something, but anyway, we don't have hiring, it's tough. Uh so, but but if anyone of you want to open a preschool, please come and look for me. Uh but if it's okay, Doria, I think you can leave my contact so that we can keep in touch and be friends at least.
Chenzi mentioned, um love your voice very much. That's something that I want to compliment as well. Uh I think we haven't talked to each other for for so long. The last time I met you hundreds years ago is you on uh presenting and I'm listening as a, as a young person. Uh so that was what I got from yesterday, our conversation, it that's reassuring voice. Um so I'm glad that uh Chenzi, we we agree on the same point. Okay, so with that, I think uh that's all. Uh let me close the session. Thank you so much to everyone. Uh Selamat Babuca if uh you're, you're fasting. And enjoy dinner and uh thank you.
I wish you all the best. Take care, bye-bye.
Thank you, Joe, bye.
Bye-bye. Take care.